All right, we'll call this June, town of Boiling Springs, to be to work. Welcome, everybody. First item for consideration is adoption of the agenda. Are there amendments or other on the agenda? Including the consent agenda.
I would like to remove the high percentage cash management policy and out of aid fund balance policy under consent agenda. Just for...
I wanted to be here and share some updates, a couple of quick things. I would say it slowed down a little bit after graduation, it has not. Crown is on campus and we see a lot of high school students running around and next week we start some more camps. But since the last time we were together, we hosted a Memorial Day event as well as graduation, so we appreciate everyone that came out to those, those events of celebration and remembrance as well. Tickets are on sale for our summer concert series at the Amphitheater, the Brinkley Amphitheater. Robbie Marsalis and Philadelphia Big Brass Concert is this Saturday, so it's not too late to get your tickets, but hurry up, it's coming up quick. Carl Cartier and Special Guest is on July 20th and we're working on a third concert in August, we're not quite ready to announce the name yet because we're still in the contract negotiations with that artist, but stay tuned, they'll be coming out soon. Speaking of tickets, football season tickets are now on sale, two town depending champions, come out and watch them. They are back on campus and I can tell you they are getting bigger and bigger every year. We have grown men walking around the cafeteria now. And then as a reminder to everyone in town, Starbucks and Chick-fil-A are open with modified hours, please come out, grab a cup of coffee in the morning, grab lunch at Chick-fil-A. And then the last thing I have is an academic update, you may have seen it, but we're excited to announce that anyone who has attended and graduated from Cleveland, Isothermal, and Gas and Community Colleges looking to come through one of our nursing pathways, we now have what we call the Foothills Nursing Promise, which is a 50% off tuition for them, just another way that we're trying to serve the backyard first and making sure we're taking care of the region and the community first and foremost. So, thank you guys for the opportunity to be here.
Is there anyone that has signed up for public comment that is not on the agenda? Please go forward, state your name.
Yeah, my name's Matthew Smart, I'm a general contractor here in town, in Cleveland County, been here for 25 years. Mine is fairly simple, I'm really looking for just putting a little bit of idea before the board on system development fees that are just part of your online 2324 budget. I've got access, or we own 25 plus lots within the city of Boiling Springs. So, for us, you know, when we get into lots that are pre-tapped with water and sewer, historically when we buy these properties, they're pre-tapped. Now, if we've got new business, it's something different, but majority of what we have is was purchased pre-tapped. So, we're used to paying water tap numbers and sewer tap numbers for connection fees. But I've got the new 2324 stuff for all of these that have system development fees tied to them. So, these system development fees for each lot come to around $4,500. That's $112,000 on just those parts that we have here in town for the same things that are already pre-tapped. You know, we're not adding any more work, we're just hooking on to existing tax liars. Other municipalities, City of Shelby's half price basically, Cleveland County, Gaknie, Polk County, Rutherford County, all these are probably 50% of what we're doing here. So, I'm just kind of putting it forward to you guys to see if there's something we can do for properties that are pre-tapped for just connection fees versus new work, new builds, new money for new developments coming in. I've got all existing stuff, so that's what I have.
Next on the agenda is adoption of the consent agenda, of course, minus items number seven and eight. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
That motion from Councilman Wood, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Green, any further discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all those that bear say aye, opposed likewise, consent agenda is adopted. That will take us to regular business and we will begin with the cash management policy. And Mr. Parker, I'll let you take over.
Yes, so if you all would turn to page 21 of your agenda, this is the substantive change of that cash management policy. And so, this policy has been in place, it's a policy that affects our finance department, it's part of Ms. Allen's standard operating procedures. And so, this policy spells out how we will assess our monthly utility payments. And so, that substantive change is again there on page 21, under A, deposits, third paragraph down, utility payments will be applied as follows. This amendment to the policy is including item two listed there, which is yard slash bulk waste. So, what happens is if you have a $50 bill from the town of Boiling Springs and you say, "I am only going to pay $19," which is what you charge me for water, we will then apply that bill when the order listed under utility payments will be applied. So, we apply to penalties first, then yard bulk waste, then recycling, garbage, wastewater, then water. The reason for that is that we cannot turn off your sewer use, we can actually turn your water off. And so, you, as the consumer, will tell us where to apply the money, council has set that. And so, that's what this policy update does. It incorporates the yard bulk waste item that's located in the proposed budget. That can be incorporated even if that fee, even the fee schedule is set at zero. It just updates the policy to reflect that. And Rhonda is not in it. Just so I had a check to make sure.
Rhonda is not in it?
She's not in it, Rhonda is not in it.
Questions or comments from council?
I have a couple of questions on section A, number item D. Are we giving cash receipts to customers?
Yes.
Yes.
Who reconciles cash receipts, or who reconciles receipts to deposits?
Emily does that every day.
Yes, Emily reconciles what is in, what is reported in utility billing. Emily reports what is, reconciles what is reported in utility billing with the receipts that were taken in, and then I match those documents with what is actually getting in the bank.
Okay, and general statute requires that we deposit cash daily, cash and checks.
$250 or more. This policy is, just to clarify, the only change was when Mr. Parker said that we were adding the yard waste fee, but it has been a long time since it was passed, so I may not have any view on the report.
Okay, and item C, the two random risk-based accounts, are we doing that?
I do that, I probably do it more often than that.
And section B, item D, annual supplies inventory, we taking the name of the supply inventory?
Depends on the supplies that we...
Tell me which page you're on.
Section B, item D. D is a day.
Okay, there we have it, inventories is what we do.
So, is that a physical inventory?
Do you...
It would be a physical inventory of supply and...
I mean, I don't know that we necessarily take a physical inventory, so I would say no, with an asterisk, that we only order supplies when needed.
So, we expense all supplies bought when purchased?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then the dual signatures for town checks, who's approved the sign checks?
Rhonda and I.
Now, it's just us.
And we do not employ, I mean, it allows us to use electronic signatures, but we do not.
Okay, that was all the questions I had, anybody else?
Other comments or questions on the cash management and policy?
My question would be, you say that you expense them when you buy them, are we a cash or a accrual basis?
Cash basis for budget purposes and accrual basis for reporting purposes.
So, both sides of the street?
I am on both sides of the street, yes, I have to report.
Because that would be cash basis when you expense them when you purchase.
At the end of the year, I will approve, we get an invoice that comes in in July for something that was done in May or June, of course, I will accrue that if it was payable and it will be reported as an expense for this year rather than next year. That went into your question, but yeah, we budget for cash, but we have to report for accrual.
But each individual department would have to do an inventory for holding this policy?
Right, yeah.
And then it would be in the master, some type of master list, I guess, of what the inventory is.
Yeah, I, you know, we don't really, I guess, take an inventory per se, but Emily pretty much keeps up with what we need and orders. If I happen to notice, I see all of the bills when they come in, if I happen to notice something, it's, we've ordered a lot of paper in a month and I might question that, or I have questioned before for ordering envelopes and we shouldn't be needing them, then I'll question that, but yeah, as far as going out and counting how many reams of paper we have, no, we really don't need that.
Does the policy need to reflect that?
It probably does, yeah, I honestly didn't even notice this at that.
I think if we see that it's there, then we, then we don't do it, we either need to do it or we need to take it out.
Yeah, as far as, yeah, taking an actual physical count, Emily routinely goes and makes sure that we don't need any of that, but with our, with the admin side, the police probably do something similar on their side, and I'm sure Mike's guys do something similar on their side.
Yeah, I know, with the state, I have to deal with that in my, with a semi-annual and an annual inventory, that's how we do our ordering, and that's how we set our, some of our budget, so. But, I'm like Tommy, if we don't need to have that in there, the language might be archaic and...
It probably is, yeah, I'll look at it again.
And it's just weird, like, if Kate can open this box of pens and it's lost or it's separated or whatever, you know, so it really, for...
For me, I would consider that immaterial, but now, if Mike has pipes and whatever, I'm sure that is material and he probably does keep an inventory of that, but I read my papers are material for us, so.
Yeah, we're talking about pens versus copper fittings or pieces of, or pieces of equipment could make a huge difference, I don't know how to deal with that.
And I'm sure the police have their own ammo and vests and that kind of thing. We don't think we have anything that's worth...
Anything that's listed as an asset is all now a matched asset list. So, would you have an asset management list? And so, all that, some of it's listed physically, some of it, the lion's share of, especially with regard to the Public Works Department and the Board of General Labor, is listed in an electronic database that we use called Asset Simples.
Is there, is this something that we, that you feel we should table until next meeting? We'll discuss this particular item, or...
I would be okay if they just, we approve it as amended and take that, take that out of the physical inventory.
Item B, section D.
And I, I think it's fine, with the number of assets, I think it's probably not worth counting.
Well, if you could, if you take out the whole, the non-material assets, if you look at what Mike and them have, it may be material, because it's not just what we have.
Whatever the policy says we should do, so if it says, policy says we should count, then you should count too, everybody should count. Or we need to have sections of the policy that says, Mike will do his inventory and Chief will do his inventory and you won't, you know, whatever the policy says I think we should do, or we should, the policy should be applicable to what we do, I guess.
And I guess if you said a dollar bill on that, it's not a, a big number of dollars greater than the inventory and added yearly, not...
With my tongue rings of paper and pens.
Papers, pens, and paper clips. I mean, you sort of get into the weeds on a lot of things, so I want to make it straightforward and then...
I guess that's what I consider as what is material, we've got a box of papers inside the copy of our, is that really material to the rest of the town and its assets?
And I agree, I don't consider it is, but I think, you know, if, if Mike, he has, he could have ample things that could be worth thousands of dollars, so I think it's, I think it's different, but I think the policy should reflect what we're doing. Some way or another, it should say office supplies or something. I think whatever the policy should say, what we're doing, policy says now, we, everybody's counting.
And we are going to, this is part of what the town manager's report, we are going to undertake over the next two months, a comprehensive review of our policies for, of our internal policies, to make sure that they align with what we're doing, and we're going to also work on developing common procedures and plans for what we're doing today. So, this was, we're going to look at this again in the coming June, July, so that again comprehensively. So, is it something that could wait to be approved, or does this need to be approved?
I would recommend, since we're adding the yard waste, to go ahead and approve it, and if we wanted to amend it, as Mr. Green said, Commissioner Green said, that would be appropriate, and we can always revisit if there's something else in there.
And I want to make sure you understand, I'm not in any way saying I think you should be taken in for it, it's like whatever the policy says.
I agree, absolutely, that's why we have policy, so.
And if I were to alter it, I'd say you're in violation of the policy, the policy says you should count, says you are counting.
Well, yeah, it doesn't...
Differentiate between this and that.
How do you maintain the frequency levels if you're not counting? I mean, that's what, on some per yard basis.
Right, well, and that's what, so I think we can, we will undertake a thorough review of this policy going forward. So, if council this evening just wants to change the section that adds yard waste, we will revisit this and it can be as soon as the July meeting or August meeting or whenever, Rod and I can sit down and she can tear this thing apart and tell me what needs to be in there, what doesn't. If that's, if that's up to you all. Is there a motion to move forward in some?
I'm okay with moving forward as long as we, you know, we're going to review it, and I don't want to make a mountain of a mobility leave, but I do think, you know, we should, we should follow policy. So, but I'm okay with moving forward with it, waiting to evaluate policy and come back.
I'll make a motion to remove 4%, 8 to 34% seem like a huge discrepancy difference.
I might keep the sum as I'm chose.
And we were pushing well on that, so we've done really well.
I think the changes due to, you know, 8% of Boiling Springs budget is a lot different than 8% of the City of Charlotte's budget, and it's to reflect that.
Questions or comments, further questions or comments on fund balance?
I had ten questions, so I think you just answered one, so this is not new?
No, this is not new.
And down toward the middle, it says finance directorship prepare a report documenting status of the fund balance available to town council's board of handling budget preparation.
That is, yeah, something that I will make my best, I'll give it my best attempt. Let you know what it is the previous year for sure.
Is that going to be determined per the audit? Or is the audit the previous, previous year?
The audit determines what the final, of course, percentage is, I can do my best, but there will always be adjustments that they will make that will affect that. I can just recommend we need to try to put some aside because our fund balance is a little low, or, you know, I think we've got this that we can spend this year if we need to move some money out of, out of the unrestricted fund balance.
Yeah, I can't speak for Mr. Little, but I think that's what we've been asking several times in your question, discussion, well, what's the unrestricted fund balance, what do we have, what, where do we apply it, how do we apply it in the future? So, I think that would be very helpful, but I know what Mr. Green said, it's a moving target, it's based on a lot of different things, and I don't know how you really put that into a document, but...
It is difficult because at any given time during the year, our fund balance will be different. If you, if I check our fund balance in October, it's going to be great because we've just received a lot of tax money, again, if we check it in January, but now when you don't get a whole lot of tax money, the May and June, you know, from then on it's going to go down because we don't get that influx of tax money coming in to the general fund, so, you know, I do my best to try to, and depreciation also, everything, you know, goes into that calculation, which isn't calculated until the very end. I mean, I can obviously calculate it unless it's something that's purchased at the end of the year, we make adjustments for debt service payments and... There's a lot that goes into it.
Other questions or comments?
I think you do a good job.
So, now you've got to count all the stuff and you have a pile of reports.
Yeah, we didn't know any pension.
I need another person for a quick...
Let's not run her off, she might retire or something.
I gotta walk with that.
Is there a motion to adopt the fund balance policy?
So moved.
Councilman Green, what motion is there, second, second from Councilman Ellis, I believe. Further discussion, questions? All those that bear say aye, opposed likewise, fund balance policy is adopted. Moving on with regular business, final item in regular business, the Ruby Hunt YMCA agreement. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, you all have a paper copy of this here in front of you. This agreement is what we approved back in 22, 23, and so this was at the request of the YMCA that we use this agreement. This was, my understanding, the last year-long agreement that the town had with the YMCA. I believe after this agreement, we went to the six-month interim agreements, which we are currently in the second half of one of those, being set to expire at the end of this month. The big substantive changes between the two agreements are on page two, under item five, recreation services. Number one, town residents will receive a minimum of a 10% discount off the joint fee. Currently, that is 50% off the joint fee. Participation in athletic leagues and programming were at a reduced rate. What I did was, I went back and figured out what council at the time felt like were the issues with this specific agreement, and then tried to preempt what we thought that would be again. And so, it uses reduced rate, and there was some trepidation about what that means. Let's see, here, item four, uses the language reasonable daily fee, and council at the time felt like we need to firm up exactly what that meant. And then there was just a note on there about baseball, and item seven, though the current agreement doesn't, doesn't call out baseball, it's, it just says that the recreation management program, or recreation program will be left to the destruction of the YMCA. But this is a one-year proposed agreement that we received from the YMCA, it will need to go back to the YMCA if you want to choose to adopt it, it will need to go back to them for their signature and approval. There is also an additional request that moving forward, oh, I left a piece off, sorry, that's why I've got the notes, we did remove article four under facilities. Item B, the one that you have, does not say that the YMCA will share 25% of renovations and major repairs at the town park. The YMCA requested that we take that language out, that language was taken out of the six-month agreements.
Where is that specifically placed, or where was?
It was under B, so under section four, facilities, on page two, B, town park maintenance. It was in that section, and it said that the town would fit 75% of maintenance costs and the YMCA would do 25%. That is not currently in the agreement we have with the YMCA. It was taken out at some point. And so, this is a $48,000 one-year contract. The YMCA is also requesting that in subsequent years, the town considers a request that the recreation budget percentage, that's according to the YMCA, be set at 1.25% of the total town budget for the contract agreement. And I can run that number for you if you need to.
Where is that specifically placed? That's the first time we have seen this, and, I mean, this is the first time I've seen it, that's why I'm asking some of the questions.
Yes, so that part is not in this deal. That part is for future consideration. As we move, so under the assumption that council agreed to this current document, the YMCA is requesting as we move into next year, we consider earmarking 1.25% for, of the total budget.
Of the town total budget?
Yes.
How much is that?
Sixty, let's see here, 48,500. Oh, approximately 56,000 of this year's budget.
Fifty cents or sixty cents?
Fifty cents of this year's budget, approximately.
So, almost two cents.
I'm not in favor right now.
Yeah, and so that was, I think that's what they're thinking for next, which we still, obviously, you know, we've got time to look at that again and to figure out the lots up, we need to want to get together, discuss that with us.
Yeah, let's, let's take up the agreement as it is.
Well, first of all, didn't we approve...
And I can run that number for you if you need to.
Where, where is that specifically placed? That is the first time we have seen this. And I mean, this is the first time I've seen it, that's why I'm asking some of the questions.
Yes, um, so that part is not in this deal. That part is, is for future consideration. Uh, as we move, so, uh, under the assumption that council agreed to this current document, the YMCA is requesting as we move into next year, we consider earmarking one point two five percent for of the total budget.
Of the town total budget?
Yeah. Yes.
How much is that?
Sixty, let's see here, forty-five. Approximately fifty-six thousand of this year's budget.
Fifty-six or sixty cents.
Fifty cents of this year's budget, approximately.
So, almost two cents. I'm not in favor right now.
Yeah, and so that was, I think that's what they're thinking for next year, which we still, obviously, you know, we've got time to look at that again and to, to figure out the lots up, maybe we want to get together, discuss that with us.
Yeah, let's, let's take up the agreement as it is.
Well, first of all, didn't, didn't we approve this agreement on the town board level of what we want to present to the YMCA?
We did.
Yes, sir, we did, and we submitted.
Is our check applicable at all levels?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then they come up with this document. And we're seeing this for the first time tonight.
Yes, sir.
And then we're being asked to consider how this plays into our budget and how that deals with the forty-eight thousand.
Yes, sir.
Further comments, questions?
I have a question. Uh, the forty-eight thousand that we're speaking of, uh, as far as the budget that we're presenting tonight, would, if we table this agreement as it's written from the Y, the forty-eight thousand is, is earmarked for the Y, but if we pass the budget and we did not pass the Y agreement, we'd have forty-eight thousand dollars for possibly setting up our own sports leagues and using that money from something else. So we, that forty-eight thousand dollars would be used for something for the town. So we could still leave that forty-eight thousand in there, we don't have to pull it out, we can leave it in. It may not go to the Y, it could go to some other sales, is that correct?
Yes, sir, so when you want to pass a budget ordinance, what you are directing me and Ms. Allen is that these are the seven buckets and you are giving us the dollar amount that goes in each bucket. You, we do not, the statutes don't allow us to budget by line item. And so Ms. Allen and I are able to move those line items and that's part of the budget ordinance as well. And so it may say that, that we're putting it in a, you know, whatever fund, we might call it salaries today, but in a year from now, we didn't need it in salaries. Ms. Allen and I may have, uh, maybe use that money to rent back Hannah's Coffee House until we can, we can do that. We can make those adjustments.
Well, it would be on contracted services as it is now, but it would come out of contracted services if, if the Y agreement doesn't pass?
Yes, sir.
Do we currently have a representative to the table YMCA corporate board?
No, sir, it's my understanding that we do not.
And that's been a part of every agreement that we've had for years and years and years and years and years. And we've had other contract type issues where the law just didn't fit their part allocation. Why would we go back to the twenty-two, twenty-three agreement that we already had difficulties with? When we'd already passed something that we had talked about in-house and we said, hey, this is what we, uh, want to see as far as the contract. That's my question to the other councilmen. Imagine many years ago, if we took that same amount of money, that eight hundred thousand dollars, we had put it into the town department, parks and recreation, and we had our own facility, where would we be today? And I feel like we've been faithful partners to the YMCA and, uh, from my understanding, uh, they rejected what we had offered. And they countered with something much less. Why would we accept that?
I say we don't. I say we gave them what we wanted and they rejected it.
And we could take the money, it's set aside in a special park and recreation, we can develop our own department and begin implementing our park master plan, we could look at funding. If we're doing one point two five percent of budget, then we'll split that in our own facilities, our own, uh, projects. Because right now, it's, it's really a stroke of the control. We give them money under contract, we ask them to fill the allegations, we ask for metrics and sometimes we give them some done now. So, to me, if we had any other type of service, if we had this type of contract issues with Republic, with, uh, animal control, with the physical management of, of software types of, if any other contract service, would we cancel that service or would we continue it? And that's a question of each one of us that I have to answer tonight.
Further comments, questions?
I think we considered the contract that they rejected. So if we ask them to have the package done by night, we don't have.
Well, it effectively ends June thirtieth, I guess.
I guess it would, but I mean, this is for next year.
But, um, you know, we had a, a long partnership for seventeen, eighteen years and, um, I think at some point it's just healthy and some point to, to stay from it to consider where we are as far as the town and, and look, look at whether we're all in and we're going to do something with our parks and recreation or if not, we're going to keep contracting that we need to be all in and committed to the YMCA so that they can do their strategic planning as well. I don't think we could, we're sort of riding the fence here, we're both ways, right?
Yep.
So I think, uh, tonight we need to make a pretty difficult decision about things. Maybe not tonight, maybe we take it as soon as, uh, I'll pass it on down the road for a while, but it does have a bearing on our budget tonight, so.
Further comments?
I mean, we got this tonight, there's, there's too many unknowns in it for me to, uh, support.
And, and if we supported it, why did we change it? You know, why didn't we amend it? If we, we were okay with it, why, why didn't we amend it? You know, if we're okay with it, we should have just kept, kept on. So I, I'm very disappointed. And I don't, I don't think I've ever heard, since I've been on the council, when we, when we, when we come up every year, we tell how much money we allocate for them. I don't think I've ever heard somebody come before this council and say, we appreciate your money. It's always, it ain't enough. We're the only, no other municipality who, who attends or uses the Ruby Hunt Y contributes. And to my knowledge, they never solicit money from Adam Oakborough, Adam Moore, Kingsdown. I think we've been a faithful partner for a long time. We're the largest contributor to the Y. It's not the, not the Boiling Springs Y, it's the Ruby Hunt Y, but Downy Boiling Springs is the largest contributor to the construction of the Y. Is that, did I not hear that, Bill?
I, I think that's the part that a lot of people, our citizens, the people do not see. They just see that figure in the contract. They don't understand that we've been partners with them a long time and have put a lot of money in it as, uh, Councilman Thomas talked about. I don't know the exact figure, but it's a lot, it's six figures, so.
And I think I would be, um, remiss if I didn't basically say I know that the YMCA is a gathering place in town. I know that it is a wonderful opportunity for kids, for senior citizens, for everybody in the town. But I also know that not every person uses the YMCA. And I still feel that we are subsidizing recreation for greater western Cleveland County and beyond. And, uh, and we just have some budget constraints this year that we're looking at funding major projects and we're looking at, um, where we go with infrastructure and CIP and many different things. It's not that we don't want to provide funding for recreation, but it gets to one where, in my opinion, if we're going to provide a certain level of funding, then we need to keep it all in-house so that we have internal controls and internal policies on what happens with it. I've said that.
And I also would like to say, I think, I think Ms. Fish does a wonderful job operating the Y. I think she does a commendable job there. And I, and I've said this a thousand times, because I don't think anybody believes, but I am not anti-Y. I, I think the Y is, is a great institution, I'm glad we got it. But when I put on my town commissioner hat, and we're talking about the town, the town citizens and that, and, and the representation that serves in everybody, I think that, I think the, the dollars just don't add up. I think there's, and like Councilman Thomas said, if, if we had, if we had a, if, if Mike had forty-five, forty-six thousand dollars in his budget, he couldn't tell us where he spent every penny of it. We, we, we'd have issues with that. If McGill or somebody couldn't fulfill the contract obligations, we wouldn't continue those contracts.
Yeah, we have, we've had a conversation about the cash budget and counting all the beans here. Yeah, and either we need to count the beans from these years of all that, um, those beans or we need to, uh, give freely with the understanding that, hey, we'll, we'll loosen the controls. And I think there was a, there was a young lady at the Ruby Hunt, um, board and she was in finance and I, I remember what she said very clearly, she said, uh, would there be any opportunity to reduce, um, the town's control over the funds and keep the funding at the same amount of money? And I think that's what this agreement is, is trying to do here tonight. And I told her, and truthfully, let's know that's not what my feeling could be, that we would loosen the controls. In fact, we want to see greater metrics about where the money is allocated. And that's just from a physical standpoint and a policy standpoint, to try to count the beans and find where we're going to be. So I'm not sure how we proceed, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion to proceed?
To proceed, hell.
That's, that's a question to you.
I guess we have a couple considerations. We could consider, um, tabling this agreement and continuing working on the agreement at a later date to be able to bring that back and, and we could do budget amendments to reflect that. Whether we reduce our amount from that based on this reduced contract or whether we increase our amount based on the current contract we want.
I mean, I would be in favor of tabling if, if the Y wants to come back to the tabling work, but I think if the, she was on the other foot and we had given the Y a contract that was changed or had some stuff amended, I don't think they would be approving it on the same day that it read.
I'm not, I think, I think we're just kicking the can.
I mean, I'm willing to go back to the tabling and talk with, if that's what they're willing to do. But if they're not, then I don't know which way to go because this contract's too ambiguous for me to approve.
So if we approve the, uh, the contract and they rejected it and now they approved the contract to us, we either have to reject it or approve it and then effectively ending the contract. What kind of notes have we got to give to the Y?
You mean under the current?
Under current contract.
So I think, didn't you say it expired earlier anyway?
It is, so you, you are not under any obligation this evening to approve or deny any or table, for that matter, any deal because we have a deal until June thirtieth. Now that deal will expire and so that means that effective July one, we will be out of the contract period. If council wants us to pig back up with an additional contract, we will just date it after July one. What did that contract maybe?
It seems to me we're always the one that having to renegotiate. I, I thought, I thought we were very adamant when we came on this contract, that that was the contract that we felt good with and they rejected it, which, I, I think we should move on with our budget. And I think our budget, I don't think we should change the, the, the tax rate, the rate we're going with anything because of the Ruby Hunt, but I think we should just proceed with our budget without the Y agreement. And then we can decide if we want to, how we want to use those funds. We want our, our own recreation director or we want to hire somebody part-time, we want to do, we, we can decide that ourselves. That's, that's what I think we should do, I think we should move on. I think we just could, could send their contract, reject it.
And that would not require action?
That, because, I mean, this is presented to you for your consideration, but no action required unless, I mean, if you do nothing to it, it goes away. Uh, if you want to keep it, then we need to table it. But if you take no action, then it will just be recorded that it was presented in the minutes and, and no action was taken and so it just naturally goes away. I will say, uh, kind of to bridge, you all also allocate funding for the Ruby Hunt Library. And so if, if your instruction to staff is that we need to take away the funding for rep services, there is not, to my knowledge, an agreement we discussed this before, there's no kind of written contract that I have found and I reached out to Cleveland County to see if they have one. So Cleveland County contributes eighteen thousand dollars a year, that's a line item in their budget, it's earmarked. They give it to the town, Rhonda then takes eight thousand dollars from the town budget and adds it to and then they, she flips that to the YMCA. I want to bring that up just because while we're talking about this, it's something that, that you all have mentioned to me before. And so there is that potential eight thousand dollars as well. Is it under administration? I'm going off memory right now, Rhonda.
It's in recreation.
Is it? I couldn't remember, so it's under parks and rec as well.
The library's in parks and rec?
Yes. Eight thousand for the libraries and the parks and rec as well. So there's forty-eight and then our additional eight thousand that we get. Now, the eighteen from the county is recorded on the revenue sheet as library donation. And so it comes in and eighteen goes out, eighteen, so it breaks even.
And it's allocated for, by the county?
Yes, the county has listed it in their budget as Boiling Springs Library, Ruby C. Hunt YMCA.
So if we, and I'm not, I'm not, anybody's saying that, that we should do this, but if we stop contributing our eight, they still get the eighteen? I, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, I mean.
Yeah, I made a promise to Nancy Blaylon. If, if you know Nancy Blaylon.
Oh, yeah, I did, I know you should make, I know you should make promises to her, really, because she can, she can.
She, she talked to me about continuing funding for the library. This, it's been a long, many, many years ago and that, that she hoped that we could continue funding the library and, uh, I would, I would not be in favor of that.
Me either, I wouldn't either.
I don't think anybody in the board would. But she was a strong advocate for that, for libraries and for reading and she still is.
And it is the Western Cleveland County Library and that's why the county provides funding for it.
And I hope she wouldn't mention, mind me mention her name, so I apologize, I still remember.
So i- is there a motion to, uh, adopt the agreement? Is there a motion to table the agreement? And, or if none, then no action is required, but I do want to offer, uh, the opportunity for a motion to table if that is, uh, desirable.
So what's the difference between tabling and no action?
Tabling means that we will.
Bring it back.
Keep the action, we'll come out. No action means that it will expire at the end of the month.
But it wouldn't preclude the, if, you know, for some discussions or negotiations or anything else, it would just be starting to track.
All right, hearing done. Moving on. Uh, to a public hearing for a lease agreement on one oh three North Main Street. I will open, sorry. Uh, after the public hearing has been opened, citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up. Speakers will address all comments to the council as a whole and not one individual. Council members, speakers will address the council from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their true name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public hearing is not intended to require the council to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. All comments from the speaker shall be directly related to the subject of the public hearing. Each speaker has allotted three minutes. Speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them to another speaker. Any written materials, petitions, photographs, and/or other documents may be delivered to the town clerk. And with that, we will open the public hearing for the lease agreement for one oh three North Main Street at seven twenty-one. And discussion. For people to, to speak.
Yes, and I can start off by just saying this is our, uh, lease agreement with Laura England for the property, uh, listed at one oh three North Main Street, we all call it Tetera. Uh, and so this is a sixteen-month agreement. The reason it's a sixteen-month agreement? The reason it's a sixteen-month agreement is because this will then bring the Statera property. That leads to the same term as the post office building. Because the bill, the lease for the post office is also expiring on October thirty-first of twenty-five. You've got a letter there from Real Estate Prazier, Bill McCarter, which says that seven hundred and ten dollars is the fair market value for that building due to its age and condition. If there are any questions on the staff side, we are here to answer them. Questions are coming in from council.
Question is, Miss England, she seen the lease?
Yes, seen, approved, and ready to sign.
And I think it did reflect like a ten-dollar increase or something like that.
Yes, sorry.
So one question I had is, you know, she mentioned that she had, her husband did substantial upgrades to that building. How does that ever factor into, I guess, negotiations on, I know we've already purchased property and all that stuff, but is that just a risk that she took in doing the upgrades or?
I started with Miss McCarter about that because I'm not, I don't know about commercial real estate. And he said, yes, that is the risk that she took when she renovated the building.
If she, if it's fixed to the building, it becomes part of the building. If it's quipper or something like that, remove it. But if, if part of the structure is, part of the structure, she can't remove it.
A lot of leases, especially the ones with the state, if there's a significant amount of upping or dollars required, then, I bless the lord, the landlord, in other words, typically recoups that over a time period. All of them, typically. But now if the leasee, the renter is doing it, then that's quite council and grants it. Yeah, it's fixed to the building entirely.
And I think the, the understanding that I always kind of, and Bishop Schweppe does significant amount of, of commercial lease work in his practice, I think the, kind of the thought we've always had is the town does not really, so we, the first thought was we don't really wanna go into the lease business. But we've blown through that one a little bit, that's fine. And then the second kind of thing is we really don't wanna be in the business of upfitting and fixing a lot of that. We would much rather have tenants who are willing to do that. And I, we have been lucky so far in that we have found tenants who are willing to, to do that. So, or a significant portion of that.
I have one question about the light tubes. You know, it, it, it says in there light fixtures. Okay, if they put up a light fixture, then it's a fixture in the building that, that belongs to the landlord or to play lead. But I couldn't find anywhere in there where it addresses light tubes. And I, and I possibly overlooked. That's been a sticking point in a lot of the state leases that I've had experience with over years. And finally went back in there, they went, state property went back in there and put a specific wording in there that says who's responsible for light tubes. If it's in there, you can point it out to me.
Particularly, I don't know. What is a light tube?
That's like the, I can see where there's light tubes, light bulbs. Yeah, man, the commercial properties typically have light tubes. And a lot of people's got LED, so you don't have those.
Particularly if, if you've got things like light fixtures, you know, it's like, you know, and then they have just a standard, they want something like this. People could do that. Exactly, but if the building would allow for a tenant to restore it back to the way it was at, when they vacate the property, they would allow them to, you know, take that back out. They restored the property and, and at their expense, make sure that it was done right and in damage. They could do that sort of thing, typically. I don't know if that's your question or not.
If they got a burned-out light, are they gonna call light to send somebody from Mike and say, where did you place?
So that's also a license, that's, that would be a tenant's responsibility.
Okay. Hey, I don't think you spell that, but I mean, it, it doesn't necessarily happen. We've given the light, it's not spelled out. That the light fixture don't work, that's usually our.
Yes, the physical condition.
Electrical, plumbing, see, yeah, I mean, those, those are H K A C, all that kind of stuff.
I assume you'd be talking like if it's got just a regular rest of the tube with violence.
Right, there's electric.
LED at their expense, that'd be.
Right, for sure.
Could do that.
Yeah.
But, but we wouldn't be required, but just totally going with the new light fixtures.
That's right. If, if the other, that would really work.
Is there anyone from the public signed up for this? Are there any further questions or comments from council before we close the public hearing? All right, close this public hearing at seven twenty-seven. And what is the pleasure of council regarding lease agreement for one oh three?
I make the motion for the lease agreement for one oh three be approved.
Motion from Councilman Green, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Thomas, further discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close likewise. The lease agreement is entered into, before we move into the second, I just wanna be clear. After opening, we'll do the staff report and then we'll have public input and then we'll have council comments, just to, to clear up that process. All right, so we will open up a public hearing for a lease agreement at one forty-five South Main Street. That's the gym, seven twenty-eight. And Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is the town-owned gym behind the old town hall. This is currently being used by the Gardwell University Wrestling Department. This is a lease amendment and so it still follows the same requirements. We are just changing the original lease dated, okay, I'm dating your order, I'm sorry. It was that lease deal back in twenty-twenty that we had originally signed with, with Gardwell Web. The substantive change is twofold. Firstly, the proposed rent on this property is going from one hundred dollars per month to five hundred dollars per month. And you have a email chain there from me and Mr. McCarter, which suggests that that is the fair market value of that building. And then the, this is for a three-year term with two additional optional renewal periods. The tricky thing with this one, because it is an amendment, Mr. Schweppe and I need to renegotiate parts of it with, with the university because we cannot lease property for longer than ten years unless we undergo the conveyance procedures as if we were selling the property. So once we go after a ten-year period, we have to pretend that we're selling it to them. And so that's why we wanted to keep this one. This will keep the life of the lease at nine total years. And so this just allows us that, that three-year renewal period. Mr. Mayor and I am here for questions. If we need them.
Is, is anyone signed up to speak on this?
Okay, thank you.
Does that mean that for nine, for the nine, the terms of lease, it'll be five hundred dollars a month?
Yes.
Well, the nine years, that, that captured, that's starting with the original, so plus amendments. So it's not starting a new nine-year lease, this is.
Three years and then two, three and two?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
But, but the rental amount will be locked in at five hundred dollars?
It will for the first three years. And then we have the option to renew in two additional terms. So if at that point we decide we do not want to renew, we're in no obligation to renew, and then we can say, hey, Bill White is the fair market value of this property now, and he can say five hundred and fifty a month, and then we will.
Well, I would just, I mean, and I'm not suggesting, I just thought, you know, things could happen, you know, when, maybe somebody, maybe somebody else come by and say, I'll give you a thousand dollars a month.
Right.
And so what happens when, when or if we get to the point where we're gonna demolish the entire property?
So it's my understanding when we discussed this last, that the gym was not something that council wanted to look at demolishing. And so when we had looked at that back in March, I believe is what it was, we had gotten prices on demolishing our entire portion and then also prices to demolish just the, the property less the gym. And so it, it, at that point, my recollection was that council wanted us to move forward with renewing the lease because we, we wanna keep the gym for either cultural and historic value and/or for its utility.
But moving forward, if we have some type of improvising where to go there, the lease would not necessarily limit us to demolishing and we just have to end the lease.
So we would be locked into three years.
Yeah, you know, you would set back to that end, they'd have to contract the end of lease right for, for at least three years. Yeah. So really, you're, you're locking that in.
Yes, we would need to, you know, we have to wait three years before we could demolish it if that is something that we're considering.
I think we need to clarify that we're not right now, we're not considering that. I mean, no one, college, they can't, they're doing that. And I wouldn't, I think it does bear noting that the college has a substantial investment there in that property. They have upgraded that property and they, they maintain it well, so.
Yeah.
You know, we talked about Miss England and now she did that, or the weapons, had definitely done that with this facility. They've, they've been a good tenant, I guess.
And I agree with that, but I also see a time that maybe it would be mutually beneficial for the town and for the university for that property, they can pull it clear and redevelop.
I do, and you know, I see, maybe not demolishing, but I see they might come at that time if we're gonna look at maybe bringing their own recreation program, maybe.
Yeah, yeah. I pictured a town of Boilin' Springs fitting the center and a pool.
Yeah, but I, but I would also.
Pick them up once.
I, I don't think the council's ever booked just to say, hey, you're out tomorrow or something like that. I think it's, I hope anything would be mutually agreed upon as possible if, if, when that time comes.
Other questions and comments from council regarding the lease agreement at one forty-five South Main?
I make motion for the lease agreement be approved.
I make motion for Mr. Green, is there a second? Uh, yes, we do. We will end the public hearing. Any other further comments? Okay, uh, we end the public hearing at seven thirty-three. Mr. Green?
I have a motion that.
I second. Uh, motion from Mr. Green to renew the lease, second from Councilman Ellis, excuse me. And any further questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor of renewing the lease agreement at one forty-five South Main Street say aye.
Aye.
Close likewise. And that carries. Thank you, Dana, for being really a good tenant there.
Thank you. Not called good very often, I'll take that.
All right, we will, we have one more public hearing. This is probably not taking long. So we will open up the public hearing for the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-five at seven thirty-four. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, Miss Holland just pointed out the budget presentation. I will start off by saying that this is the third edit to the slideshow so that I can exercise the maximum amount of brevity that you all are used to receiving from me. But on a very serious note, you know, I appreciate council's willingness to work, and this is in the slideshow, but I'll say it now. Appreciate you all for what you've done, your willingness to work. Appreciate the department heads and our town staff. As you all know, this budget has been a labor of love for us for the past several months. And so it's definitely something that we, yeah, and it, yep. It's definitely something that we've worked on both as a group of seven, as a group of, of council and department heads, and then we've received some public input. I'm sure that you all have as well. So it's definitely something that I think we, we can all be proud of and about where we're potentially headed. You all received a copy of my official budget message and you have got the twenty-four, twenty-five budget ordinance staff report there. You are being presented this evening with two options. And so option number one, or option A. I don't, I don't really need to count for that, that may surprise you all. Option A is, it's okay. Is to levy the adblocker tax rate at forty-one cents per property valuation. Option B is to levy the adblocker tax rate at forty cents per one hundred dollar property valuation. The substantive difference between the two is that option A would allocate an additional thirty-three thousand dollars to the solid waste department, where option B would not allocate that additional thirty-three thousand dollars. And council has expressed an interest that that thirty-three thousand dollars be put into the reserve for a trash truck fund. And we are now up and running, potentially. Well, Tracy, clicker's not working. Just hit the next one. I'm used to that, so.
That gets, just get into a relationship with the dog.
Yeah, yes, that's, that is Leah, yes, the town dog. Tracy, keep telling us to have, bring your dog to work there.
That's a whole other topic.
That's a whole other thing, we'll get to that. We are, we're having sex. Yeah, just hit the next one. All right, so we started off with a tax rate of thirty-eight cents. You have all heard me say that one penny is thirty-three thousand dollars. That's an approximate number, the actual is thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. But I can't, I can't think that way, so I can't round that. With the Consumer Price Index, projected inflation rate at, what I checked today was three point four percent. And the North Carolina Livid Municipalities suggesting that we decrease our shell tax revenue by seven percent, which equates to approximately forty-five thousand dollars. And we also started the year off by increasing our debt service by a hundred and two thousand dollars and some change. This is what staff considered when we began the budget process. Next. And so from there, we worked with, with you all in council, we received feedback from council, we worked with department heads and tried to put our heads to use the people's money to accomplish the goals that council has in mind for the upcoming year. These are just the highlights from the six departments. There are seven in the budget ordinance, but I combined streets into one. And so it tells you on there, administration, we're focusing on intersection improvements while also making sure that we meet those debt service obligations of the post office and Statera property, upgraded equipment for our police department, and also allocating money for animal control, the fire service eight point seven five cent tax, which is based on our total property valuation. The streets department, which is divided into two parts, paddle bill and non-paddle bill. Paddle bill money comes from the state, we use that for paving and sidewalks. Non-paddle bill money, the overwhelming majority of that goes to street lighting. There's also the safe streets for all grant in that line item, as you're looking at your budget ordinance there. The next one is solid waste. And so we were met with some challenges in our solid waste department, both in terms of an increase in tipping fees from the Cleveland County landfill, but also a five percent increase in recycling fees from Republic, which is our third-party vendor. And the cost of trash cans continuing to increase right now at sixty-nine dollars per can. That is trash and recycling, both. And then recreation, including the Y M C A agreement, ongoing maintenance to our park, which is in the budget for us to replace ceiling tiles, sinks, and toilets at both of our bathrooms at the shelter facility. Making sure that the town's longstanding commitment to the Broad River Greenway is continued to be realized, which I know is a priority for council. And then making sure that we continue to invest in our community events, including music on main, web stock, the Christmas tree lighting. Which one did I forget? Was that it?
Yeah.
Okay, next. And so then totaling the general fund, the total general fund will be approximately four point five, four point six five million dollars. That is a two percent year-over-year increase when you compare it to last year's budget. And then in the water sewer fund, just always remind us that it is an enterprise fund. And so by definition, it is designed to make money. We have to run it a little bit differently than we do the general fund. We inherited a four percent water increase from the Shelby Shelby, a recommended two and a half percent increase from the North Carolina Rural Water Association, which is how we staff settled on our recommended increase amount at six point five percent. This will go to funds. This will go to fund, uh, capital assets in the water sewer fund, as council has reiterated several times. We are concerned about our capital, capital asset condition ratio, which is currently at fifty percent. Uh, though on the upcoming audit, as, uh, Ms. Keller discussed, we are in danger of dipping below that number. And so the only way to get that number back up is to replace our capital assets with, with new assets, and so we've gotta get some of those over-depreciated things off. Uh, that's gonna happen through equipment purchases. Uh, equipment purchases, but then also, um, through our capital projects, like the South Main Street water line replacement. Um, and upgrading that line, which services all of Arkham University from a cast iron pipe to an iron pipe. Uh, but then also undertaking some, some needed and critical upgrades in our wastewater treatment plant, and I put this in my letter, and I meant it. Um, you all have always reiterated to me that you want our infrastructure to be the envy of this region of the state, and to be a gem, uh, that we have here in town. And we have heard that, um, we were all involved with someone from North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, he's, uh, one of our regulators, Mike. Todd, Isaac and I were, were on a team's call with him the other week, and he said, I am frequently told that you cannot have crystal clear water if it comes through the UV process. And I always tell people, boiling springs uses UV bulbs, and their water is sparkling crystal clear, and that is the reputation that we want to have. Um, and so that is what we kept in mind, we looked at recommending water sewer increases. Um, I promise to be, and so you all have, before you, two options. Uh, option A, which is to levy that adblocker rate at forty-one cents three hundred, a six and a half percent increase in the water sewer rate, and adopting the proposed FISA, uh, schedule. Um, that option allocates thirty-three thousand dollars to a capital reserve line there in the budget, which would be used for a trash truck. That is the option that staff recommends. Um, option B is to levy the adblocker rate at forty cents, uh, six and a half percent increase in the water sewer rates, and the adoption of the attached fee schedule. The only difference in the two options is that, uh, option A includes the additional penny on the rate, and that money then goes to the capital reserve, uh, for potential purchase of a trash truck. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude our remarks.
Thank you, is there anyone from the public signed up to speak regarding the budget? Nobody signed up, Republican, y'all had to read that statement at the beginning, I thought we were gonna get some.
That was Tracy's last good one.
Okay. Uh, council, comments, questions, uh, of course, this is something that we spent a lot of hours with, and I know there's probably some, um, desire to move forward with one or the other, but as always, your thoughtful discussion is, I respect it and appreciate it. So, uh, with that, floor is open for whoever wants to comment or ask questions.
I'll, I'll comment. As, as I've stated before, I'm in favor of forty-one cents with a thirty-three thousand dollar reserve, because, uh, I think, how much do you, how much would a new garbage truck cost, Mike, profitably?
Two hundred fifty.
Two hundred fifty, three hundred five, yeah. If, if we had to purchase a new truck today, we'd really be looking to raise the taxes ten cents, wouldn't we? So I think if we're gonna be proactive, we need to start having some money put back. Also, we're in danger of our fund balance too, if we fall below that amount. I know, if you look up there, and probably majority of the citizens look very forty or forty-one, I'll take forty. But I think it, I think if they, if they really understand what we're doing with that, is rather than having a drastic property tax increase when that happens, then we, uh, been proactive in preparing for that and not be looking at a steep increase, it's my two cents here.
I also, um, improved, council, bring the forty-one cent. I was on the council when we started putting money back, and boy, we were glad we put it back when we had to get that garbage truck. We had to put extra money in where we had something to start. So, I think that all the things that we did wanna do, uh, the citizens, the local springs, which got a, uh, all the things in there, and I don't know what we cut out.
Other comments or questions?
So we're just, uh, comments now, we're not, we're not motion for anything, so I, my comments would be to, to go with option B, the forty cents. We're talking about that thirty-three thousand, I think it is good for a trash truck. We pretty much got that money for, uh, that we didn't have on the budget for the retail strategies that the Cleveland County gave us. Before we're gonna cut anything, it was gonna be retail strategies, retail strategies got funded through county. So, uh, I, I say, I, I would comment that I would lean towards the forty cent rather than the forty one, option B. So how does the, that forty-eight thousand that was, was going to be allocated, like I said, we could, uh, to change, we can change any of those numbers now. And we can make it amendment saying we want to put a line out of thirty-five thousand for recreation, for part-time, whatever. And we could allocate thirteen thousand from that toward, uh, capital reserve for a trash truck. I mean, we can, we can make some recommendations to change that, like, like one thing that I don't know that I agree with implemented is three percent colon, three percent merit. I would suggest three percent colon, two percent merit, take that one percent, which is roughly twelve thousand dollars, eleven thousand something. Put eleven thousand with thirteen thousand, we have twenty-four thousand dollars for a trash truck at forty cent on the tax rate, and we still accomplish the same thing by having twenty-four thousand set aside in a trash truck. And forty cent on the, the hundred. But it reduces that forty-eight thousand in recreation, uh, down to where we have thirty-five thousand, and there's a lot of consideration going in that. So do we compete with the YMCA on providing baseball little league? What does that look like, do we then charge mental fee if the YMCA wants to use the baseball field for, um, little league and that generates revenue? There's a lot of, a lot of things could happen with that, or are we just setting aside forty-eight thousand dollars to say, we're gonna do something with recreation for that? And I'm not, I, I don't know that I would agree just to let that money just sit there for recreation. So I, I don't know, and that's just some of my, my ideas, but where do we go with that? But I think a negotiated, um, option C for me would be forty cent, I'm looking at, um, reducing some less funding. And it's not that I'm not pro-employee, I just think, uh, what I'm looking at across the board is a five percent, um, constantly, everything's five percent, I mean, I know that still affects the bottom line, but that, that gives the town some money to be able to put in reserve for a trash truck, and accomplish our goals without heavy taxation.
So, so it, it, you were saying that you'd wanna change the budget to say two percent from three to two?
Uh, three percent colon, two percent merit, and then that, that one percent saving, add that to capital reserve for the trash truck, which I think is eleven thousand, twelve thousand, I.
I think it's eleven six hundred.
Now it's going off me.
Yes, eleven six hundred plus the thirteen thousand would give us twenty-four thousand six hundred dollars that we could put aside, that's, that's a pretty good dollar figure. And I think that would be something that I would like to see, but, um, that's just my opinion, I'm trying to crunch numbers and trying to get just the word of the dollars and figures. Because we do need to set aside for traction. But with the YMCA agreement going to end, what, what do we do, I mean, e- either we need to earmark that money for a project specific purpose, or, I mean, what's, what's the plan now? I think that forty-eight thousand dollars, we can discuss that later, that money's there, that, we don't need to decide where that money goes tonight.
I don't, I agree, I agree, but I have a question, uh, that would be in, in, I don't know, in that discussion. Could that forty-eight thousand dollars go to, it would be in parks and recreations, would it not? Could it go to, uh, the, some, some upgraded park?
It can, it can go to whatever, so the forty-eight thousand, so if you all will look at the budget, if we've got FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget ordinance, it doesn't matter which one you look at, you all are telling Rhonda, and maybe you two agree, but most of them, that you are, that you are accepting that A colon, we're getting this much money, but that you put that money into these spaces. And that's all you're doing is leaving sober. If we, Rhonda and I can move up to ten percent of a total account out, and so like if you all said to me, Zach, we wanna take, of the forty-eight, I, Rhonda and I can take up to twenty-six thousand roughly out of that forty-eight thousand without it ever coming to you all. So you can say, hey, we wanna do this, it does require a budget amendment, Rhonda and I can move that money without much to worry. Anything over that ten percent threshold between the departments, Rhonda and I will come to you all and say, we are moving X amount of dollars from recreation to trash truck reserve, or whatever you all choose. As long as I get the nod from Rhonda, and I'll do it fine.
But is the line out of, is that a YMCA agreement, forty-eight thousand, or is it just at recreation?
It says YMCA contract with the line item, the state doesn't allow us to budget that line item. And so though you all have seen the line items, those are not reflected at all in the budget ordinance.
You're just, but. It's like contracted services.
It's contracted services YMCA, but you all are just putting them into big buckets, these buckets, and then Rhonda and I move them in or change them between line items. So it, we could put in there whatever we wanted to, and call it line, whatever, we can move them around with no issue. So we don't earmark money in the same way that you would in the traditional sense, where it has to be used for that purpose. That's not, that's not an action that you all are taking, if you wanna do that, we can, there's another way that we do that.
What about under expended accounts? Do we get going to end of the year, there's under expended accounts, can any of that money be earmarked for trash trucks?
We can, as we, uh, so, I think probably, and what normally happens is at the end of the year, so June thirty, Mary Grace will get all the auto paperwork together and start compiling that, and then all of that, any overages, where we have more revenues than is the under expended, all that just keeps the fund balance automatically. Now, if you want to say, we need to restrict X amount, thirty-three thousand dollars for a trash truck, and I don't want anyone to touch that money, then that's a, that's a different ballgame.
That's a restrictive account.
Yes, cause then. Right, then it comes out of that regular, that regular pot.
And it goes into its own separate account there anyhow.
Ron, do you have any idea about, about how much that might be unexpended?
I do not, not right now, I don't, no.
It, would it be a substantial amount, would it be, I mean, just from years past, maybe, I'm not, I'm not.
Gosh, every year's so different, um, huh. This year's been pretty tight, but we've had some, um, bacon season in the police department budget, so. I'm still hit, trying to hit moving targets at this point, I have some accounts that need some money, some accounts that have some money. This is that time of year where I'm hitting moving targets.
Which part before this is deft?
Right now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
How about lapse salaries, how is that true? Do you have a, you have a position vacant for a month, two months? That'd be, how can we trade lapse salaries?
So that is, um, like with the upfill to the old, the old post office, what will become hence. There's, in the police department, there was a, because there were two positions that were not filled until recently, so there was extra money in salaries. Well, Rhonda and I can pull that out and put it somewhere else, so long as it's under the ten percent of the total account, um, we can do that. And so that's how we did not have to do a fund balance appropriations, cover the upfit and renovation of that building, because we use salary money that was left over to plug that hole. And so that's what we do on items that, lines where they have gone over, we can just internally move that, again, as long as it's not over ten percent of total account. And so Ron and I make those adjustments as needed to, you know, I'll give you the, the prime example, street lighting is going to be open, uh, because doing energy is going up, you know that left and right, and so we are, we have to just naturally find money somewhere in the budget to plug that hole. And the merit is a, a natural place where we can do that, so by having money allocated to the merit bonus, um, we're able to have more flexibility, and we can use that money to fill in the gaps with whatever issues may arise that, that we don't budget for.
I could agree with Councilman Thomas on the forty cent rate and a five percent raise. I think the five percent is consistent with municipalities from our size across the state of North Carolina. There'll be a lot of people who don't get three percent, four percent. But they're gonna have to fund all the increases that potentially ask for this budget.
So I have a question, I guess. Uh, so what we're looking at now is adding the third option, option C, which is just like option B, except for the, uh, merit, is that correct? So, I guess possibly we'll have three votes, possibly?
Are there any other comments or questions before we end the?
Not in favor of reducing from six to five. And, you know, I know, I, and I don't, I don't, I don't mean this exactly like it sounds, but to me, I'm not worried about what everybody else is doing. To me, I'm looking at what I think we need to be doing, and I think we have examples all over the board where we can't find people to fill positions. And I think the only way you would do that is by treating them well when they hit here, so. I, I'm in favor of, of the proposal as it, as it was, as far as salaries go.
Now, I think you had predicted like two point three percent, I mean, it, because of the volatility of the employees and stuff like that, I mean, not everybody's gonna receive three percent.
Yes, sir. Not, rest assured, if it is two percent, not everyone will perceive two percent. We are running a meritocracy here at the town of Portland Springs, uh, and so when you say to me, we put in two percent, three percent, twelve percent merit, what you are saying is, every employee does not get that, or we would have called it the cost of living adjustment.
And the town's been really, uh, good in the past few years with, uh, with inflation and several things, we've used our apartment funds, we've done seven percent, I think, at one point, and we continue to look at percentages and do them before that, is that not correct, a couple of years ago, seven percent?
Last year was seven percent.
And, uh, so, so we, uh, I, I definitely agree with Mr. Green, in that circumstances, we wanna continue to retain good employees and, and, um.
Maybe, maybe that's why the police department's for. It had been told in the law, that.
Yeah, but there's a lot of variables goes into why somebody doesn't work for the town versus some other place, and I don't know that one percent of merit's gonna change you, that I think a lot of different things could win you that. And that's not to cut you off.
No, no, I mean, it's just the whole package.
Yeah, it's the whole package, but, uh, we could look at adding, um, insurance plans and different things, so, so, I, I think in general, the, the board has been, uh, extremely pro-employee and, and trying to keep a stable workforce. I, I don't think that would be, reducing it that one percent this year is, um, to say that they're not fulfilling their obligations, it's just, we have other financial obligations. We're trying to spread, spread the budget as we can, um, by still providing that five percent increase in. Eleven thousand dollars, eleven thousand six hundred dollars, is that gonna give us a trash truck? No, but if it goes towards something, I mean, I don't know. That, that was just my thoughts, I mean, I have definitely respect on the other thoughts as well.
So, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know about that.
No, I don't.
Any other questions?
It's, it's a difficult process.
Close the, uh, public hearing. Continue to have discussions, Mr. Parker?
I have, um, so if, I'm open to walk out, um, you all have got indirect. If we are going to make these adjustments, we cannot approve the ordinance as it is written, because you have to tell us exactly how much money Rhonda can put in every budget. So we'll need to meet again. I think that the same thing can be accomplished by approving option B. Then we can do a proposed budget amendment at our next meeting.
So you'd have to be four due level one.
Well, so if we approve option B tonight, that sets the rate at forty cents, which I think Councilman Thomas is what I understood.
Yeah, I wasn't even working with that for forty cents, yes.
Okay, and so then we set it at forty cents, and that does not fund a trash truck. But if that is council's desire, when we reconvene either July one or whenever, you all can then say to, to Ms. Allen and myself, we want to take what would have been forty-eight thousand dollars in the, um,
YMCA.
In the YMCA, and take thirty-three of that and put it in the trash truck fund. Does that make sense? And then I can also norm the, um, I can build in and norm the merit based increases. Because you, the personal policy gives me discretion over creating the rubric by which we assess merit based increases. And so I develop that, that rubric, I can norm that so that, um, we, we give out two percent tax. I can do that without it being an issue, if that's what you all will to do. That way we, you're not coming back in another week or two. Because Rhonda and I, if we do start rearranging things, these numbers on the page are gonna change, and Rhonda and I have to have, the numbers have to be correct for the major sign.
So you can norm it to two percent?
I can.
Are you standing on that one?
I, I think it is important to state that the reason why, uh, the increases have happened over the past couple of years for staff pay and, and benefits is because with the salary studies we had done, we were well below, uh, municipalities of our, comparable municipality. So I, I don't, it's, it's not as if we have just been boosting salaries for the heck of it. It's, we are trying to catch up and still are not caught up. Um, I do, I do think it's worth mentioning that, so, uh, that's, that's all for me.
Yeah, we were not, we're not even to the midpoint.
Sure, I, I have one other, and, and I probably don't know how I feel about it, but if, if we're gonna start moving that forty-eight thousand dollars, and everybody's on the same game here, it doesn't matter what the why does, they come back and, you know, wanna renegotiate and that, that door's closed. We're spending the money somewhere else. I mean, that, that, everybody needs to, you know, if we start moving that money, and then even if, like we tabled it tonight or something, and it, like, the, uh, our attorney says, uh, it doesn't prevent us from starting all over from scratch if they come back, if, if that's the desire, but I just wanna make sure that everybody understands, if, if we move that money out, we're, we're pretty well saying, at least for the next year, are we gonna come up with that money somewhere?
We haven't moved any money out at this time. And we will not move any money out until you all meet again. So that forty-eight, if we, and I may be misreading the design, if, if you would like us to rewrite the ordinance, we gladly will do that. That would just require us to meet again, and toward the end of June. If that's what you all wanna do, that's perfectly fine, it's a deal.
Yeah, but my, my point was, maybe they don't come back till August.
And the money's moved.
And the money's gone, we already allocated, that's, that, that's too late. And, and I'm okay with that myself, I just wanna make sure everybody understands, you know.
Let's, uh, let's close the public hearing, and then we can move on with the motions and discussion and action. So we'll close the public hearing at eight o'clock. Now, what's the pleasure of counsel regarding the budget for this year?
Well, I, I motion that we adopt motion B.
All right, Councilman Wood with a motion for option B. Is there a second? Hearing none, man, now that fails.
I move we adopt option A.
All right, Councilman Green. Motion to adopt option A, Councilman Ellis with the second. Discussion from counsel. Any comments, we have a motion and a second on the table. No comments or discussion, we'll call a question. All those in favor, say aye, unless do raise your hand so that we can get a count. All those opposed, white sign, so that fails. So we have failed on option A and option B. So we will now have perhaps another option, uh, but this is gonna require, we'll need to set a date for the subsequent budget.
Yeah.
We'll have to have a, we have to get this done before July one. Uh, and we have to have ten days or whatever when we present the new document. Uh, and so we'll have to, uh, once we figure out, uh, well, I guess we could, we could come up with what we want to present in the document tonight, and that can be hashed out, or we get not, and then we'd have to have another meeting before. So, uh, back to counsel.
I guess you could entertain another, um...
Another motion for option C?
No, I mean, I guess we could return back to either, I mean, so since we've proposed both of those, could we not have another? Could me or Mr. Litt not, either one of us say, well, let's go back to option B or option A?
No. So we're done?
I'm not sure about option B, because there was not a second.
No, the new motion's reconsidered, I love my, one time out, twenty years I did it, I left it, it wasn't for, um, setting out, it, it, it would have to be a motion to reconsider, but, um...
So, option.
Why didn't you, why don't we do it then?
Option.
Why didn't you do it when you were ahead?
Well, just, I mean...
There are no changes.
Option A is now, because it failed, so it is beyond that goal, yes. Uh, option B, it failed for lack of a second, but it wasn't necessarily voted down, I...
I think, I think it would have to be a change, I, I, I think if ever made the motion, could potentially make a change.
I, I think it failed, it failed for lack of a second.
That motion did, for sure, uh, if someone were to make another motion of some variety, but it still would require you to come back.
So Councilman Wood would need to modify his motion.
I, I wouldn't know what to modify now, because if I modify, I mean, like, I mean, like, uh, option C with changing the, uh, uh, the cost of living, living at the same and changing the, uh, the merit rates to ten percent, which Mark, uh, Councilman Thomas, uh, mentioned, that you said if we did that, we'd have to come back anyway, right?
Right, and I think it kinda is what the mayor was saying, you pretty easy, I think I would say.
We could tell him what we wanna do, but we're gonna have to come back anyway.
Right.
Kinda like, be, be another, another budget discussion like we had.
It's basically a budget discussion, it sounds to me, that you're gonna, that's the, if you come back, you crunch the number based on, just like you did with A and D, we're gonna have the discussions and you had your, and you re, you know, re made a motion and a vote at the next, you know, whenever the hearings happen.
The assumption is you change, I think, from B could potentially be that we, option B with the addition of a thirty-three thousand dollar, just to move thirty-three thousand from the recreation budget and put it into the, um, sanitation budget or solid waste, if you wanted to put it in the, the trash truck item line item? I don't know, would that be a, because that's a change in the motion.
Yeah, I don't, I, I just, I think it, I think you're gonna need, have to come back.
Because there's the, there's the hangout there.
Yes. So, June twenty-fifth, uh, the eighteenth is the planning board meeting, so we are not bound to Tuesdays. Um, we can do the thirteenth, that is a Thursday.
Well, well, are, are, are we, have we decided on it?
Decided, we gotta come back.
Well, if you didn't decide on it, you'd talk to me again, if you don't.
Gentlemen, we've, we've been at this for a dozen hours now.
Can we not get any out of there, hit some budgets?
I'll just say, I'll just say, we've been at this for a dozen hours, and with the motions on the table, no one was offering any comments. And we're just kinda spinning our wheels here.
I agree.
And it's, it's just a little bit disappointing, now, please, go ahead, Councilman Litt.
And, and I think we all knew what the two options were gonna be when we got here.
And, and I didn't need any comment, because that's what I voted on, A. Yeah, and we got a second, so I, there were no comments from me, because I knew what I wanted, and I think, I might speak for Councilman Green, but the, the two votes were that. Now, what, what do we need, I, I, I'm confused on what's...
Was that a report, I mean, are you asking, was that a report, or is it, I mean, I'm just assuming that you're gonna have to come just to, you know, basically either a, a budget meeting now or, or, or convene sometime between now and enough time to be ten days' notice to, you know, vote again. Or, you know, because you're gonna have something presented to the county or to the public to review prior to your vote. And maybe it just means that you do have to meet again, to further hash this out as in, as, as part of the budget meeting.
Of course, my goal is regular saying, whatever's brought back, I'm gonna go against it, but I'll support whatever the vote is.
I agree.
And there's also an option for...
I was unhappy with the option.
I am, but...
There's also an option for, um, continuing resolutions if we can't come to a agreement. Right?
There are, um, though every day that we go after July first, that we're in a continuing resolution, the expenses of that day are immediately deducted from our fund balance upon the passage of a budget.
Okay, is, is it possible to take a five minute recess and find out if a motion fails to get a second can actually be introduced? Uh, so, so, do we need a motion for a five minute recess? Can, is there a motion for a five minute recess?
Motion for a five minute recess.
So, all is fair to the law.
Exactly, Councilman Litt, you have your thoughts. Ellis left out.
Can we do that part two?
I don't know.
Oh, wait, you're, you're...
I thought we were doing...
I'm gonna push it, I didn't...
This is all you try. I'll do Robert's.
Like I said, we're the key, it says that you think you thought my job in the county, but I don't understand that, it's not so simple.
Sounds like you're, uh, you're, 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 you're gonna reconsider, probably the government can change your motion.
Has to change.
So cash about our, or we say you made one, strictly present. Definitely second, so that's, that's different, that's a good question here.
This hour.
Fewer than two seconds. But it never gets seconded, so. All our progress is on there, right?
Yeah, you can't, whatever he says.
Gold in you.
Or he's dead, he's dead.
You can't, uh, I'm saying...
He has my statement, and if not, it has the process of revision. Yeah, that's, that's, that's the issue, because... Can the revision be trivial? Yeah, that's what I, that's what I, I was gonna, um... Can the revision be trivial? Uh, I mean, I think it needs to, needs to be substituted.
How's the kitty cat today?
Good, I walked it to the bed and everything. I'm gonna type her the site, he's in, he's in the picture.
Well, he's so stinking cute.
Won't leave Tyler alone.
They say it was a boy, I thought it was a boy, but, kind of telling them they're real little, but...
Yeah.
That's right.
Um, but they didn't say what was on with his collar, was he still...
I didn't say.
Again, again, that's why I got that.
So, he's pretty healthy then. It's a little kitten.
Aww.
It got stuck in a car, up in like the wheel, well...
Oh, no.
Kids or...
No.
Oh.
So you got any pets? I got a whole pet, I need.
Oh, okay.
Same, I got a few I can give away. Every time Woody sends me another picture of another doll, I'm like, that's grounds, that's grounds.
I thought you were talking about getting rid of Woody.
That's what I thought you meant. I got a pet I'm getting rid of.
Well, he'd probably go for my dogs, don't tell him that.
Just no trouble around the house.
Oh, depends on the day.
I'm gonna get my fix set up so that he can get after that doll, that doll, that way Mallory can grow up with the doll. There's nothing in the camp where I don't have much black tar in her shoulder.
It's all cancer.
Yeah, she's learned now, she shuts the door, she jumps at the door, she like shuts the door, actually, and then sits at the door and cries.
I recall him, uh, leaving back where recesses ended, um, with, with no second. It is as if the motion never happened and could be brought back up. Uh, if there is a desire for that, uh, just to put that on the table. The, the option A was voted down, uh, three to two, and so it cannot be reconsidered. Uh, option B, because there was no second, was as, it as, it is as if it never occurred. And can maybe in- introduced again.
Can the same person introduce it?
So someone had to. You can kinda treat this as almost as a, as a, as a motion to reconsider if, if the prevailing side, well, there's no votes, you know, so, anybody can make the motion as if it never happened.
Clean slate.
Well, I made the motion reconsider option B.
All right, Councilman Wood.
Does he need to strike the word reconsider?
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's not reconsideration, because it's not, um, there's nothing to reconsider, so it's...
Okay, I, I'll make the motion once... I'll make the motion once and then we, uh, approve option B.
All right, Councilman Wood with a motion for option B. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Thomas. Is there discussion for option B?
I wanna hear back from the manager again about the possibility of the three percent raise and how to change that into rates to two percent down the road if we would amend a budget, that possibly amend the budget down the road.
Let's talk about merit.
Yeah, uh. I came from you.
It did come from, I mean, I can, I can do that. I can say, hey, y'all, guess what? That news, three, you gotta get a hundred to get three percent.
Right.
And no one's gonna get a hundred, so I can do that now, but the reason that the budget is normed at an expense level, a- and so the revenues, I mean, if you go later and amend the budget and you were to say to me, I want you to figure out what one percent merit is that we budgeted for across the board and take that from the individual salary lines allocated to each department, because that, that's what you're asking.
That's what I understood you said.
Yeah, I mean, and I can, I can do that, um, is there a place that you would want the approximately one, uh, eleven thousand six hundred dollars to go? We can do that, I mean, that certainly can, uh, you would need to, I mean, you can amend the budget to move money into a reserve line item at any time.
Okay. That requires very faithful, very, but I mean, I understand it, 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 it happens or it doesn't. That answers my question.
What are you saying, this is like, well, weren't able to do that, you'd have to pass a vote.
Oh, yeah, yes.
It is?
Yes. Any other comments, discussion, or question re- option B has, the motion has second. If none, we will call the question on option B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None. All right, and those opposed?
Aye.
Likewise. Okay, that carries three to two. So, option B is adopted. All right. Thank you for your patience. Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir. Um. Couple things here, so I've already talked about it over the summer months, we're gonna work on reviewing, uh, some ordinance interventions, I'm gonna skip that one. The town of Flatmore would like me to convey a thank you to the town council for not increasing their base sewer rate, uh, this year. Um, Kim Durin and Renee Welsh are in Macon at the Southeast Tourism Marketing College. The TDA sent both of these individuals, and Kim will graduate with her three-year certificate in tourism marketing and festivals and event planning. And she asked me to tell you all about that, um, and to thank you for our continued support to the TDA. The TDA had an intern this spring who worked on media contact lists, itinerary, et cetera, but in, uh, important items, you know, the TDA is now suspending, uh, grant applications due to some uncertainty around the American Hotel. Um, sign of date, we have a new battery that we are testing out, is a lithium battery, um, on Monument Side on West College. We purchased that and came in, it was installed yesterday, uh, and Mike can monitor the battery on an app from his telephone. So, he will be doing that to see, uh, and alert him to when it is dead, I hope that will be of interest. Uh, the town won the twenty twenty four Vision Zero Safety Award for hitting the ground running and making strides and keeping momentum. So, I wanted to share that with all of you related to our continued support of, uh, Vision Zero communities. Does the, uh, is there a desire on the board to not have the July meeting, is my last item, um, that requires a vote from you all to cancel that meeting if you so desire? And with that, Mr. Mayor, I yield back.
All right. Uh, is there any appetite to push the next meeting until August, uh, seeing that we've met several times in May, not only for the council vote, but the staff?
We're scheduled to last second. Um, and the next, so the meeting following that one in August is August sixth.
Should I make a motion that we forget the July meeting and, uh, have our expert get the big, August sixth, twenty twenty four?
Councilman Thomas with a motion.
Second.
Second from Councilman Ellis. Discussion on that matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Okay. That passage of amendments. Um, we'll go from right to left tonight, so Councilman Green.
Um, just like to commend the staff on all our work on the budget, I know we haven't done that for eighteen years, that is not an easy task. Uh, I'm gonna come in here and talk what you do and how you do it. Uh, the only other thing is, uh, at a GCL MPO meeting, uh, went well, uh, Councilman Litten know that I was elected vice chair of that. Well, the chair, uh, relocated, so I am now on the chair. Found out in my last meeting, but, uh, uh, so, uh, things are going well there, I work on, you know, all the, a lot of good projects, and we have some good ones there, there's no money. You know, they're really struggling with, uh, more electric vehicles, without paying road tax, the road tax is really, really suffering, that's a, that's a dilemma, really dilemma for the country, not just for the, for the, for North Carolina, but, uh, keep going along, maybe we'll, somewhere we'll get some money there, but, uh, and, uh, the Fuddiel meeting is next week, it's, uh, Saxton will attend and I'll present, so I'll be on cruise next week. Far, far away, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Thomas. This budget cycle has been, uh, a challenging time, and I'm just thankful to be working with the script of individuals and the staff to be able to come up with some options for the town and, uh, it's, it's very difficult to consider all the different pieces and how they fit in, so I'm thankful that we can have discussions and work, work through these things and, and when Rhonda was talking about financials and things earlier, um, I just wanna say a special thank you to her, she, um, she looks after town in a great way, I appreciate that and, um, I attended the Ruby Hunt YMCA Advisory Board meeting just recently and, um, I, I came away from that meeting discouraged and sort of felt like the end of an era had come and, um, I want to express my thanks to the YMCA and to, um, really and to the, the previous town council members who saw that through fruition to be able to build that facility and to add that as a part of our community. I hope to move forward and, uh, consider where we go with regulation and what we're gonna do and then how we fund it and, uh, it's just not always an easy, easy decision, but I'm, I'm thankful to be here and working for many different states. Thank you to the staff again, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Back to, to address back to me, I'd like to have read through the record that, uh, talked with some of the other, uh, board members who, uh, made the point to let me know that, uh, Councilman Thomas represented us well, they were very impressed with the, the way he conducted himself and the way he presented our issues, so, uh, I, I think that is our, that we could, we put a place in the reputation, we committed, I support that.
I feel like I failed because we don't have an agreement.
No, I don't think, I, I, well, I understand you didn't fail at all, I think you did a great job.
And if it was because of something I said or something I did, I hope that doesn't reflect that.
Uh, I didn't, nobody, I talked to a couple and nobody has indicated that to me at all.
Excellent. Councilman Litten?
Uh, thank you to Rhonda and staff for working on the budget, uh, Rhonda, thank you for answering questions, they're not pointing to you, you were just, you just happened to be the person who, no, didn't answer them. I didn't, I heard, I didn't see you tonight, I thought, well, who's more answering the questions? Y'all, I'm glad for your, I appreciate you answering them. Uh, if there was any information that came out of that website follow-up, I'd like to see that at some point, please. Uh, I would also like to look at the original agreement between the Y and the town, if it can be found. If I need to come over here and dig through the minutes, I'll do, I would like, I would like to see the very first one.
The very first one.
That's seven, eight.
Graduated, um, scale, I think that's what it is.
Was that two thousand seven, two thousand eight? Or eight, nine, somewhere in that ballpark, I think, right? Uh, I don't know who I looked at. Uh, eighteen years ago.
I also did it online.
Well, we'll find it.
If we can find it, I mean, don't put it in the top of the priority list, but I mean, if you can find it, or if I need to come over here and search, I'll be glad to.
Can you narrow down for me which one of that website? Follow-up, are there specific things that you're looking at?
Well, the town and went from going to web, you have to have had a follow-up meeting with, with any kind of minutes or anything that came out of that, there wasn't, there was nothing. Okay, that's all. Okay, there's nothing to do before, but I guess there's nothing to do before. I'm just curious. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Wood?
Uh, yeah, I was, I was thinking, uh, when I got elected to this position that I had, as I've gone through this, I had no idea of what I had got myself into. Uh, I remember the day after I was elected and I rode through town and I thought, you know, this is really my town now, I'll make a difference in this town, and I felt a little different. And I still feel a little different, but I'm telling you what this budget process, I guess now I'm a full-fledged council member for, uh, the town of Orleans Springs, it's, it's been tough. Uh, and the other council members have talked about, it's been tough, they've been through other, uh, budget meetings, uh, going through other budgets. But these guys, all of us, we may not agree on everything, but when it's all been said with, I think about what Councilman Green said from the very beginning. Once the vote is had, then we're still a council and we're united with whatever the vote is, but we're very disagree when the vote's over with, we're one council. And I think we represent the town of Orleans Springs as one council, not individuals on the council. And I've probably served with each and every one of these, and I'm glad we got an area that'll circle the wagons and get us, get us back in the direction, I'm glad we got an attorney that can help us get things worked out where we don't have to have another budget meeting and start this process over again. So, I'm just glad we're even here with, with a voting on budget tonight, so I appreciate Rhonda and Tracy and, uh, Isaac and Rhonda, I'm gonna have to say about you, you make Zach look a whole lot better than he really is.
Do you know what's up?
Yeah, but no, we got, we got, we got a great staff, Chief Phillips, everybody, uh, Mike, the whole, everybody. And I mean, I can't say enough about how much we appreciate you all, I hope you don't feel bad if maybe we took one percent of your, uh, merit raise away tonight, but.
You should, you should feel bad.
We didn't.
We did.
No, but I mean, I, I just, I don't, I, I don't want them to feel underappreciated or underserved because we thank the world, uh, just say, that's just, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir.
I think when I lay my head on that pillow, I just think, what a place to live.
Amen.
I mean, uh, and our staff, I say it, I wanna take care of our staff because they take care of us and our citizens. And, uh, and it's the leadership, Zach and his position, but it's all the people tonight, especially Rhonda, you're kinda putting on the spot tonight a little bit, I thought, and you came through with flying colors. I just, I think we live in the best town in America, and I still believe that, and I'm gonna live here, and, uh, thank you for taking care of us.
Can I have one, one question? So, now that we have a budget, I think it's important that we communicate why we budget and how we budget. Is there a way that we are communicating the increases? Well, people are gonna ask, we're, we're seeing increases. I mean, is there a way that we can do that either in the flyer, um, and some type of written communication and some type of something, we don't, somebody's gonna say, hey, my, my water bill went up. I'm having to pay all this extra fees. And I think if we get ahead of that and we say, well, the reason we're doing this is because we want to continue, um, to serve our, our citizens. So, I, I don't know if that's something that's commonly done, um, or is that something we even wanted to, but for me, sometimes it might soften my stance on budget, somebody explain it to me or I got to see what it is. That's just my opinion.
I, I think, I think it's very valid, I think we, we're gonna remain united, I think we all need to be talking the same thing, so I, I would, I think it'd be great if you could come up maybe soon, bullet, talking points for us. And then we're all, we're not out there saying, I'm, I'm not out there saying, well, I did, I did bullet.
That's not my opinion. I mean, you know, pay seventy-five in our, uh, why I propose increase and then names, four percent increase in, uh, from the county.
The water, the water one's easy.
I know, I mean, the only thing I don't know, it says increased lab fees, increased utility costs, inflationary pressures, increased permitting costs from the state, but now the ongoing CIP efforts, I don't know if I can tell my neighbor what that is.
He probably doesn't know either.
So, the six and a half percent increase to water sewer, four percent came from the city of Shelby, two percent came from North Carolina Rural Water Association's recommendation that council approved and adopted a few years ago. The two cents tax increase covers the post office debt service of a hundred and two thousand dollars a year, less thirty, three thousand dollars approximately, um, which leaves us with about sixty-six thousand dollars that we're on the hook for, and so that's, that's the two cents.
Mr. Mayor, if I have one, please. Um, no one came to look at the, it was open, did anybody come to see the budget? So, that, that's probably not happening a lot, and plus, there's very few people here about that, but I'm, I'm the same way, I think we need to be able to tell the people, this is why we do, they now agreed with it. At least we can tell them, this is why, so I think that bullet, like we're talking about, is a good thing.
And we can make something that goes in the newsletter.
Well, I think that's good, I, I mean, I think we, I think we all should be able to defend whatever we can, and I think we should be defending it by the same things. And maybe, maybe, I don't, I'm, and I don't necessarily know that we need to go out and just, I think it'd be good in the newsletter, but I think we should be prepared from that question.
Exactly.
To be able to say, well, it, cause some will, some will be concerned about the yard waste, and some will be concerned about sewer rate, so they'll be concerned about different things, so I think we.
And some will be concerned about the YMCA. So, my hope is that we can get ahead of those things, and it's about transparency, it's about open communication. And it's about what, what we do, and it's not an easy decision, I believe, but, um, in, in the long run, that we find some way of communicating that and that we have a unified message and we're unified.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That's like most of the town managers' letter. And that's probably the most thorough level I've ever seen.
It is, but I, I, I see a, a lot of people open their water bill, they look at the water bill, they don't read the, you know, not, cause they have somebody have to be somewhere, say, well, I was in the newsletter, I had one guy, he said, where'd you get that newsletter? It's in the water bill. Oh, yeah, I'm serious, didn't he, he just got his bill out and.
I say, oh.
Hey, yeah, I agree, that's what I told him, I said, you need to read.
Like I prepared the budget graphics for you all, but those kind of things, I can, we have that, that's not anything that's fancy or new or innovative, we can prepare something like that that says, hey, this is what your yard, your yard waste fee goes to this, these are the, you know, if you want me to, I could put inflation, I could put sales tax, contraction, whatever, whatever, I think you all know I have a problem with debt. Um, so I will go into the weeds very quickly, um, and so I will have the staff read that and tell me where I need to cut, but, uh, to whatever level you all are comfortable, I mean, I, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, just something basic and, and as transparent as we can be, so, and, and so some, some of these we sent out as a draft, we can, I guess, give it a thumbs up. I think that's important that we communicate that because we, we don't have a whole lot of people here, maybe they're live streaming, I don't know what. Um, but, hey, yeah. And so we, you know, I always think, and I ask my wife, and I ask a lot of your members, do they know what really goes on? And, and they're like, no, I don't, but then we get asked some serious questions about a few people, and I, I just think it would be very helpful, so.
Citizens and taxpayers should also be more engaged.
It was happening. Anybody else?
All right, um, a couple of things before, and then we, we have a closed session to go. Um, I really am looking forward to July twentieth, um, I know that, not to dismiss the jazz band coming up this weekend, but I've known Carl Cartee for quite a long time, and so having him back is, uh, is gonna be a really big deal. And that's gonna be a big day for the town as well because that's our, uh, uh, memorial for, for Mr. Hensley as well. Uh, July twentieth, you've got a little bit of music at the park on that day, I'm, I'm right on that day, am I?
You are.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, you are correct.
But then that will follow, all that will follow, and it'll be an amazing day. Um, I will say that the- Um, I will say that the, um, most positive and unified that I get feedback from, from the town is when the, uh, the green and gold charger flags are flying in town, and really what that is, is a huge thank you to the educators and the, a, a pat on the back to the students, uh, we're a town that's built on education. Uh, we have two of the finest elementary schools around our town, our middle school, Crest High School, is number one in the county in terms of test scores, has been for the past several years. Um, we are only trailing elementary schools who have fewer metrics, I just wanted to tune our horn just a little bit. Um, but so many of our kids are graduating and gonna step onto campus and become running Bulldogs, and we just support each other, and to be a town that's built on education is what I'm about, uh, and, and I'm so proud to be a part of the entire package from pre-K all the way to graduate school, uh, in, in, at Gardner-Wentz. Um, so thank you to everyone who is involved in that. And finally, we've done a lot of the respectful part of the respectful growth over the past eight years. Um, we've been very careful and have been very respectful, and this budget steps into the growth part, and I think that's why it has been painful, because there are really difficult decisions that we've had to make, tough choices, but we're moving, we're moving places, things are going to begin to happen, right? Aren't they going to begin to happen? But seriously, I, I apologize if I lost, uh, a little bit of my temper, um, I don't think I've ever hit that gavel before. But it felt, it felt good, I didn't, but seriously, I always appreciate the, the efforts that the staff put in day in, day out, but I say it every weekend, I really don't say it just to say it, the wisdom and forward-looking uh, vision of this council, it is a privilege to get to work with, and so thank you for what you've done, thank you for the efforts that we've put in, um, and on board. Um, with that, we do need a motion to go.
I have one more comment. I'd like, I'd like to say that, uh, how much we appreciate you, we do, it's like, uh, I like you do a fine job, and, uh, I think, uh, you get the little heat when you need, you get a little heat, and I think you get us back on track well, so I think, I think we should, we're talking about the council, but I think you're, you're the, you're kind of the head of the pack here, and I think you lead us.
You got the results, that's all.
Thank you.
You lead us away.
Thanks, sir. Uh, is there a motion to go on the closed session?
So do.
Uh, a motion for Mr. Tom, Councilman Thomas, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Green, uh, all those in favor say aye. You guys are welcome to stick around, some of you have to stick around.
Oh, you're going back?
Yeah, we'll go with the, we'll go with the conference room, uh, if you guys need to take a quick back and break, but listen, we'll make it quick.
Three minutes, three minutes.
And we've got a couple of issues.